Take your event to the next level with Crossroads TV. Professional audio and video production, multi-camera live streaming, audio system for your panels and entertainment, plus stunning video screen production on LED walls. High-quality, seamless production tailored to your needs. Let us bring your vision to life. Contact us today.
Welcome everyone to tonight's planning board meeting. Our chair is sick today, so she asked me to sit in for her. So we'll get started. The first item is approval of minutes of the January 14th planning board meeting.
Make the motion to approve.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? No, all right. Item number two, disclosure of conflict of interest. Anybody have any conflict that they would like to disclose? Not hearing any. Number three is First Church, formerly First Baptist Church, is requesting revisions to the conditions of the zoning contract.
Good evening. Jeff Allen from A.E. Hudson, and it's good to not be here for four projects. So at the end of the last meeting, you'd asked me to meet with the city engineer and go over what we wanted to do and kind of describe, you know, look at the site with him and see if there are other things that could be done perhaps. And we did, I know the city engineer is here this evening. And after we met, Andy wrote a letter to Ann, or a memo, I guess to Ann, saying we met on the 13th. And in his plan, he said that our plan would work. But he preferred to do some other things differently. So we talked about that, and I drew up some plans back at the office and shared them with the pastor. And the churches decided to stick with our original plan. And so that's, that's the only thing I have to present tonight is that we're going with our original plan, and I can show it on the screen here. So all I'm looking for this evening is a vote whether you will accept this or not, and refer this on to the city council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any comments from anyone on the board?
Can I just ask Jeff why the decision was made to not follow the city's plan and stick with the original?
There was, with, with the plan that we drew up for the city, with the city engineer's ideas, there was some loss in parking, including, I think, once my math was correct, there was about 11 or 12 spaces that we'd lose. So that's, that's a big part of what we were going to gain. And so that, that parking and being able to get people not to walk in the street or not to have to cross-street to come to the building, you know, that 10 or 12 spaces is not going to solve for our entire congregation, but it's, it's 10 or 12 people, or 10 or 12 carloads of people that don't have to cross the street. So it's, it's purely driven by safety.
So was there any discussion about making, you know, any of the changes, like the traffic flow alterations, or, I mean, there were multiple recommendations?
Right. Yes, and they were all rejected. The, my client wants to go with the original plan that we came up with.
Okay.
And are presenting here.
Anybody else? So the, the way the contract, or the new contract zone was written, basically to send this on, we have to approve the, the site plan along with everything else. I mean, obviously, we can make recommended changes to it, I, because it might be in the best interest of all parties to, if we could send something along to, to city council, for them to start that approval process, even if we aren't comfortable approving the site plan as it's being presented to us. But I, I guess we should just start with, if, if they were broken apart, is, anybody on the board have any comments or want to discuss what we would, or what they would potentially recommend to city council as it's written?
Whatever it is that we recommend, is my understanding, we have to make some clear findings. Am I correct?
Everyone's being shy.
Well, I guess my question's become, I mean, the city had put forth some recommendations. I mean, I guess my question's become, how comfortable are we not following the safety regulation, or the safety recommendations that the city had made? And so that's, you know, to say that extra parking adds safety, I feel like, you know, what the city's engineer was trying to address in his recommendations was safety. So I feel like to negate that, to gain a few extra parking spaces, I don't understand how that adds to safety, I guess, is my concern personally.
Andy, do you have anything you'd like to?
Could you come back up, please? This shouldn't be very difficult. Last time we were here, there were, at least in my mind, there were a couple of issues that were raised, and if they can be addressed tonight, I have, I'll have a presentation, I guess, as to whatever findings I may have. There was an issue regarding the handicap ramp. Is that, is that on your plan here?
Yes.
Okay. And is that acceptable when you discussed it with the city solicitor?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, there were some issues that were raised, and rightly raised, by the chair and a couple of other of my colleagues regarding parking and entrance and ingress and egress. Do you recall that?
Yes.
And one of the concerns was, my concern was, is that if I be it for me to tell anyone, you know, what is a safe way in, a safe way out, there are people that can do that in this city. And that would be the department of safety or the chief of police. Have you discussed that with the police department?
Yes.
And what have they suggested that you do?
He said this plan was fine.
Right here?
This plan, yes.
Okay. That answers whatever questions I had.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the concern that we had, which is why we asked the city engineers, the police department never reviews site plans. That's not in their purview, so.
Did you see the plan that the city engineer had put forth?
Is the plan from the city engineer different from what you're proposing?
Yes.
Okay, tell me how it's different.
He proposed angle parking and a one-way flow through the parking lot. So his plan would have had us enter in this row over here, and all of the, the parking spaces would have been angled, like when you're going into Walmart, you have to go in left or right, back out, and then travel around. So they would have driven in on this side, and then gone over here and driven on this side, or on this third row of parking, or fourth row of parking here. The parking along Park Place, the, the road that runs next to us, would have remained as shown on the original plan.
So what you're proposing is not consistent with the, our city engineer, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, tell me why.
Because it was not accepted by my client. And I've been advised-
And why was it not acceptable by your client?
I don't know.
You don't know?
Because that's not, if, his decision and the city, or the church attorney's decisions are not, not part of my understanding. And I have, have been advised just to, by the, by the church attorney, to simply say, this is our plan, please vote on it.
Thank you.
Andy, could you get up and, I guess, explain your thoughts behind your recommendations?
Yeah, so, so what, what my thoughts were is, as you've seen them, the angle parking going in, and having a one-way, that way, it's easier to get back out, you just come, come back out and you do a circle. The only, the only drawback of the way I have it is you do lose some parking on-site. So I don't, I've never been there during, when this place is open, so I really don't know if it's safer to park in there, or it's safer. This particular plan here, it will take, will hold more cars, but I also see where it could bottleneck coming in and out of there, where it could push traffic back out onto, onto Park Street. You know, you might want to conditionally approve that, and if it doesn't work, that's an easy fix to turn it to one-way. Angle parking is not, you know, you either go angle now or you don't go angle. But, but as far as, you know, starting that way, if it does back up on Park Street, maybe change it to one-way.
Do we have any ability to go back and change it afterwards, though? If we approve this, that puts it into their contract, correct?
I don't know if you have a-
You can put that in your, recommend that the council make that part of the contract zone, yes.
Sir?
Yeah.
With the plan from the church, is it more likely, or less likely, to have a backup issue onto Park Street? Vis a vis your plan, is it more likely or unlikely to cause a backup on Park Street?
Well, I personally think that this plan here would have more apt to have a backup on Park Street. But I guess it depends on how many people are in there. This, when you, when you drive in, when you're driving in, especially when you're parking to the right, you tend to not get, you might not get all the way square in there, so when you back, back out, you kind of pointed in the direction that you came already, do you know what I mean? So, so angle parking kind of takes that away. That's what we did on Appleton Street, and that's a one-way street. We're only, they're backing out into a 12-foot lane, and so far, I think it's worked all right there. But here, here they've, you know, he's got a 24-foot lane, it should work fine. This, I mean, there's nothing wrong with this, this plan, really. It's just, if, if it wasn't for parking spaces, I just think it would be safer and work better with angle. I mean, if, like I said, if, I don't know if you can do it or not, it's conditionally used. The, the, the parking on Park Place has to be straight in because it's dead end, so.
How could it, how could it not be wrong if it would be safer to do it another way?
Well, I mean, he's an engineer, and I'm an engineer, so I guess we have different opinions on that, so I think-
He's an engineer that's representing someone's interest. That is not consistent with what the city's interest is. So I'm going to listen to you. Is it more likely or less likely to have a backup issue with your plan, sir?
I think it's less likely.
Okay, thank you.
You know, like I said, I, as far as the, the people parking, who's crossing the road, that's, I, I don't have any idea how, how that works. But as far as the traffic goes, I think my plan has a, has a better chance, a less likely chance of traffic backup, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I'd like your opinion, I guess, on the, the contract zone amendment, or the new contract zone, that we would be recommending. The way it's written today, right, item three is the site plan for the parking lot is attached, and any amendment to it is subject to review and approval by the planning board. I, I don't know how we would rewrite that, if, if we wanted to rewrite it, to say the site plan for the parking lot, instead of is attached, would we, would we say something like, must be approved by the planning board?
It says, "Any amendment to the parking lot site plan is subject to review and approval by the planning board." So you could just add a lang, language to say that this is a provisional, or what was the language you used, Andy? Try?
I guess provisional.
Provisional, yeah.
A conditional, sorry, maybe conditional use or something with-
Well, I, again, I-
We can figure out what the word is, but the point is, you're only recommending this to the council, so it would be the council that would decide whether or not they would have to come back if there's an issue with the plan. But if you put that in there, I don't know, there's a counselor here, I think. It's not, it's not a bad idea. You test it out, and then, it doesn't say that it has to go back to the council again, it just says, "Any change has to be reviewed and approved by the planning board."
Yeah, but that, that's just saying that if they were to change the plan again, not-
Right, right.
If we wanted to-
You can put-
If the city decided that it was unsafe, that we can, that they have to come back to make a change, right?
Right, but you can add whatever language you want, and then the council can vote on it.
I'm just really struggling to understand. I feel like we've come a long way from where we started just a few weeks. I say a few weeks, it's been a couple of months now, but, but, well, and it's been 18 since all, since you all started, but I haven't been here that long. Since, since I've been here, I feel like we've come a long way. There's been a lot of concessions on both sides that have made this plan getting closer. And I just don't, I guess, I'm struggling to see where, if the city is now to a point where they're making, you know, the city engineer is now making a recommendation to adjust this plan slightly, how the churches come back with a line in the sand and said, this is it. So I guess I'm just, I'm struggling to see how we're this close to the end, and now we're going to just drag our feet and not work together here, because I feel like we were working together pretty good there for a little bit. So I'm just struggling here now.
As I understand, your interaction with the council is only a recommendation? So you could recommend those changes, it would be up to the council whether or not that they accept those changes about conditioning and coming back and changing things later. Again, if you want to add those recommendations to the council, they then have the option to, to vote on that.
Okay.
Let me, let me see if I can make some sense of this. The fact that we all want to have the safety issue addressed on Park Street, so we're creating this parking lot, are you with me so far?
I am, but the, the safety limitation is not limited to Park Street. The safety includes the entire intersection.
Well, there have been accidents on Park Street with vehicles coming out of here.
And Elm Street.
Okay. So we've got a parking lot that can accommodate most of the cars that have been parking on Park Street into the parking lot?
No.
No?
No, but we're about to tear down two more houses to grill this parking lot, but-
We, we have about 100, well, last Sunday was probably around 170, 180 there. This parking lot is just a tip of the iceberg. We get, want to get as many people in there as we can, because we will still have parking on Park Street, on the Appleton Street by the library, in the concourse, down by Haniford's. Where else would people park?
I think it's amazing that your congregation parks all over and makes it work.
Well, we have to.
I know, and I understand, and I, I understand the challenges. I mean, we all live in the city, and we all, you know, go to different establishments or wherever, and we all have to park wherever to make it work. And I, I understand the struggle, but I also feel like when a city engineer steps up and says that they have a safer plan than the one that you're proposing, and you're sticking your feet in the sand and saying that we're doing this for safety, that just doesn't align, I don't understand.
Again, under invasive counsel, this is what I've been asked to say.
No, I, I understand your position, Jeff, so. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think I heard all of it. His response was, well, we're going to wait for the council to make that decision?
No, his response is just that he's been advised by the church's council to ask for a vote.
Well, is there anybody else who wants to speak? Anybody from the public?
Hello again. Everyone, I just want to reiterate, again, we're all trying to make sure that we're accommodating, we're being inclusive, and we're being safe. We know at this point they're not going to get all their congregants into a parking lot. It seems like we need to truly take safety over just fitting a couple more parking spots into a parking lot. At this point, we have been told by someone who the city has hired, that there's a safe plan, and there's a way to do this safely. I, that, there you go. That's, that's it. So please just listen to the logic, the, the better, wiser judgment here, and, and the people who you're paying who aren't having conflict of interest with the church. Because Jeff is not only just hired, but he's a congregant of the church. He parks in that parking lot, there's a vested interest for him to see this through. Yeah, so, thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain any, any motions that anyone wants to make, if there's no further discussion. And remember, we're, we would be making either an amendment to the contract zone, or, or making a recommendation, or both, I guess.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure everybody's clear. In addition to voting on the site plan, you need to, to make some recommendations concerning the comprehensive plan. So you're not finished when you decide what you want to do with the site plan.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know if this is part of the discussion, but what I'm struggling with is making a decision based on everything from both sides. And from one side, I've got something substantial, something objective, and that is the safety, and the reasons why it would be safer doing it this way, as opposed to doing it another way. And then the folks that are proposing this plan are telling us that the reason we want it this way is this is the way we want it. And that doesn't answer any questions for me. I mean, it doesn't give me anything so I can make a decision, a rational decision. So, and that's, that's, that's what I'm struggling with. And if anyone has any answers, please come up, other than to say, the council says to do this. I'd like to know why the council says to do this. So that's, that's where I am.
Probably against the advice of council. The church's position is that under the Religious Land Use Act, it's a federal act, that we have the legal right to do the property as we're proposing. And any inhibition to that is an inhibition to the free exercise of religion. And that is what the federal, the Religious Land Use Act provides for, that's what we're making the decisions based upon. And the argument over who's safer than someone else is a speculative argument. There has not been an accident on Park Street. The only accident has been on Elm Street, where one of our congregants was tragically run over by a car.
Couple of things. If, if I were to be presenting what I felt was safety or unsafety, that would be speculative. When it comes from someone who's an engineer, that's not speculation.
Is it your, is it your position that Hudson's not equally safe?
Your attorney's position about infringing upon the church's religious rights, I don't buy it. And you folks walked in- buy it. And you folks walked into this situation knowing how it was zoned. You didn't buy it, and then it was rezoned. You bought it knowing very well what the restrictions were at the time. No one is, they put the restrictions on Mr. Dangler, not on the church.
I'm sorry, who's Mr. Dangler?
He was the fellow that was gonna put in the front lawn.
Yes, thank you, yes. Way back, yeah, thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Two things. Number one, I think it's unhelpful to place Hodgson Engineering in competition with the city attorney, city engineer in terms of some sort of safety competition. Hodgson Engineering is well-known to you, and has never, to the best of my knowledge, probably provided you with an unsafe plan. In all other instances, with all other clients, you've accepted Hodgson Engineering's representation as to their safety, and you've accepted it with full faith and confidence. So, now, it seems awkward to place the city engineer's engineering opinion against Hodgson's engineering opinion as to the safety of an issue. The second issue is, the Religious Land Use Act is not a matter of opinion, it's a matter of federal law. It's been adjudicated over and over and over again. And so, whether or not you think it will work, it's already been established that it has.
Sir, I read the law, I read the case law.
I appreciate the point.
I read everything, and I read all the opinions that were attached to it.
Yeah.
And not one of them cites anything that lands on all four on this case.
Well, that remains to be adjudicated, but.
It's been adjudicated. You read the cases and the statutes, so I don't want to argue with you.
No, I don't, I'm not, I'm not attempting to argue with an attorney. What I, what, the point I'm making is that it's, it's, it's the position of the church that we have the right to use the land, it's our land, in a way that is most conducive to the free exercise, so that we can have people who struggle to get into church due to physical problems. As you would expect, we have an aged demographic in our state. And so, I don't know, I, I, I think it'd be unfair for me to represent what percentage of our congregation struggles with physical issues, but it's a significant percentage, simply because of the aging demographic. And so, we want to provide as much parking as possible for those folks to minimize any walking along the streets. As it stands now, we have permission to use the parking lot that Dr. Huff just recently sold. Haniford gives us permission to use their parking lot, but that's a long walk down Elm, and you can appreciate that it's kind of a longish walk from the concourse, not for younger people, but for the older constituents of the congregation. So, we're simply trying, to the best of our ability, to provide, you know, the most access, you know, that we can for the most amount of people who are struggling. And it just occurs that we have a lot of people who struggle.
So.
Because of the age.
I just, I guess my, my thought here is, while I appreciate everything that you just said, I don't feel that the city is putting engineers in competition with one another. The city pays an engineer for a reason, and this is the exact reason why. The other part of this that I feel like I'm struggling with is that if this were any other business beyond a church, we wouldn't even be having this conversation, right? Like, if a business were to buy this exact lot, and then step in and try and do this exact thing, this wouldn't even be a conversation. So, while I appreciate your congregation needing parking and needing access, I, I really do, it's not, it's not like we can overlook. I feel like we've come a long way from where we, you and I first met, at least, you know, with this whole conversation. I feel like, you know, first off, you guys came with no plan whatsoever, just, you know, speculating what was gonna happen to the lot and wanting a bunch of code, or zoning changes. Now, at least we have a plan, we're moving forward, we're working together. I feel like this is all progress. So, I just, again, I'm struggling to understand how now we're gonna put a line in the sand, and we're gonna stop working together on this. When we have a plan that's so close to your plan, I don't understand why now we're gonna stop, and we're gonna just say we're done, working together.
If we have two equally weighted and presumably professional engineering opinions as to what constitutes safety in this particular instance.
But again.
What's the difference?
But again, you have to appreciate where we're coming from as member, you know, as members of the planning board. We have to be able to go with the city engineer on this, and I, I under, I appreciate your situation. For you, it might be a little bit different. You've got a competing, you know, engineer on this. For us, we really don't. We have the city's engineer giving us what he is suggesting as the safer plan, and so, at least for me personally, that has to be taken into account as a planning board member. I mean, it, that takes nothing away from Jeff. He's
Yeah, no, I.
An amazing engineer.
You know, I appreciate the weight of that. I do. I understand. We're simply trying, you know, we've been at this 18 months.
I understand.
And we are, and I appreciate that that predates, you know, your service.
Yep.
But, that 18 months, we are tonight where we started on day one.
But are we? Because I feel like we've come a really long way from where we were when I started, and it's not been anywhere near 18 months.
But, because you weren't privy to the history.
But, and I understand.
We started at a place, and then we were taken way down a rabbit hole.
I get it.
To get back here now.
Yeah, but I feel like now we've circled up, and we've gotten somewhere, so why now are we gonna put our heads in the sand and pretend like we're not here?
Okay, so, let's just be honest. You have to appreciate the negotiating point, right? I want as much parking as I can get. Why, why, why wouldn't you extend the courtesy to let me at least argue for it?
Because it's a safety issue that, you know, and if, if that's what we're claiming is it's a safety issue, then how, how are you gonna stick your head in the sand now for, for five parking spaces?
Don't do that.
No, but I'm, I'm just asking.
Don't do that, don't do that. I've never stuck my head, head in the sand in my life. So, the, the issue is that you have, you, the initial response of the city engineer was, this plan works fine. However, I think I might get a marginal improvement in safety if I go in this direction. And, and so, we're simply saying, is there a way to get as much parking as possible into that space? And, and I know this is recorded, so I'm going where angels fear to tread, but, how do I say this delicately? With an aging demographic.
People get.
Comes driving issues.
Don't be shy, sir. Don't be shy.
But I think, I think that, I think that's the point, though, is that if, with the aging demographic and the driving issues, this plan is, the city's engineer's plan is going to be a safer plan for them to get in and out of that parking lot. You know, the.
Yeah, I, I, listen, I don't underappreciate the point that he's making. The church, and again, I represent a constituency, I'm not a bishop, right? It's congregational form of government, so they vote on it.
Okay.
So, I, I've been asked to simply lobby for as much possible parking space as we can agree on, and if it's possible for you to say, or if it creates more comfort for you to say, we, we will approve this, or we would like to condition this on X, whatever that might be. I understand.
Well, and I guess my struggle here is that, you know, you say that this has taken 18 months, but, you know, we're pitter-pattering back and forth with these, you know, these type of things, where you had a plan in front of you, and if Jeff, Jeff had just been able to update this plan, I feel like I personally probably would have passed this through tonight and been fine with the plan, because at that point, we all agreed, and we've all talked about this, and we've, you know, we've come to some terms on this.
Yeah.
But.
No, you're, you're a large improvement of what was before, trust me. And so, I'm tickled.
I, I guess it's clear to me now, and it wasn't lost on me before, but your, your marching orders from your council is that you want more, most, the most parking.
It's not just we can.
Okay, then, if you had just simply said that at, at the get-go, that would have been fine.
You know.
Okay? So, we won't, you need more parking. Now, it comes down to.
Yeah, what can the city engineer?
Whose, whose plan are we gonna have? Sir, if, if I'm gonna make a mistake, if I'm gonna make a mistake by coming on, down on one side as opposed to the other.
Right.
I'm gonna make this mistake, I'm gonna err in the side of caution. I'm gonna err by agreeing with our engineer, and he says this is the safer plan. If someone says, geez, Neil, you, you made a mistake, and you let this thing create a danger or a hazard on Park Street, I'm gonna say, no, I didn't vote that way. If I made a mistake, I voted in favor of what is the safest plan presented on the evidence that I had before me.
Right.
That's, that's my position.
I'm just wondering if the city engineer, I mean, do you see an opportunity for some sort of molding of this, or creating some extra parking, or, I mean, is it, I know this, it puts you in a tough spot, but.
You can get a few more spots, parking spots on there. Jeff and I talked about it. He didn't like the ideas, but, you know, on the north end, if you're looking at the plan, the north end is 24-foot lane. But if you go one way, I personally don't think you need that much.
Got it, I'm gonna let the engineers.
He can, he can.
Okay.
I just wanted to get the drawing back up, so you'd have a frame of reference.
So, I, I mean, I, I just want to jump in and say, you know, in, in an effort to keep this entire process moving, because we have to, the way it's written, the way the new contract is written, we have to approve the plan before we make the recommendation to city council. I would propose an amendment to item three of that, to, to read, the site plan for the parking lot must be approved by the planning board and attached for reference upon approval, and that the planning board will review the site plan for the parking lot after the city council approves the contract zone amendment. If we, and then, and then still keep the, any amendment to the parking lot, site plan is subject to the review and approval by the planning board. If we change that verbiage, we could make the recommendation to city council to get the process going, because they have to vote on it twice. And then, that gives more time for negotiations and possibly updating the site plan, where it can come back to us and we can approve it. Does that make sense to you, Ann?
No.
Anybody else?
No, I, I feel like we have to approve a plan in order for this to move forward, and I feel like we've yet to receive a plan that personally I am willing to approve. I feel like we need more, at least more of what the city engineer has recommended be actually taken into account before we move forward, so.
And, and, and so, in that case, you know, if, if we were, I would hate for us to make a recommendation to city council to not approve this, because that, because then it has to go, it would take a long time for it to get back to us.
I'm gonna, I'm going to, I'm gonna put everything on red here and say that if we take about five minutes, you folks can figure out a way to come up with some language where you can probably get in another couple of parking spaces, and we can agree to the site plan, and agree to the findings, and send this on to the council for final approval. With all the adults in the room, I can't believe that this can't be done. Mr. City Engineer?
I'm here.
Do you folks ever take a five-minute recess? And do you, you don't do that, or you do the?
Oh, we've, we've definitely done that before.
Well, I don't want to be, I don't want to create something we've never done before, so.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yep, yep.
Our understanding was that the planning board is providing advisory recommendation to the city council.
Correct.
Is, is that correct?
Correct, and, and I guess.
So, one of those options is that you can just vote it down?
We can absolutely, like we did the last time, make the recommendation to city council that this not be approved.
Right, you can do that.
So.
So, you could, you can just, you could simply reject the plan.
Is that what you want us to do? I don't understand. I feel like that's what you're looking for us to do tonight, and I'm not sure why. I'm just curious. I don't, I feel like we've worked together so well that I.
We're getting along so well.
I real, I truly feel like we've come so far that I just am struggling to figure out why now you just, it feels like you just want us to reject this plan tonight and move on.
No, I'm not quite that intractable.
Okay.
I, I don't think it ever hurts to take a five-minute recess and see what the engineers can come up with.
Okay.
I just wanted a clarification point.
Yeah.
If, at the end of five minutes, we can't come, or 10, that's the case may be, we can't come to some reasonable compromise, then.
Sir, what?
It can be voted down.
Don't you want, don't you want to get something behind you and get on your way and get this thing moving for your, for your, for all your, for your parishioners? Don't you want that done?
Again, I came here tonight thinking we were gonna pass this thing.
It's in their best interest.
I am shocked that this is the plan that you brought us tonight, because I really thought for sure that we were gonna be able to move on with this thing and get, get you guys set up to be able to move forward. So, I just, I'm struggling to understand why this is where the conversation we're having tonight.
I, I think you'd appreciate the point, if I can put it this way, that, that, that I am all, also subject to the advice of council.
And I understand, I just.
But, is it still on the table that we take a recess and put the engineers together?
It's up to the chairman. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. Five minutes, 10 minutes? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
Take your event to the next level with Crossroads TV. Professional audio and video production, multi-camera live streaming, audio system for your panels and entertainment, plus stunning video screen production on LED walls. High-quality, seamless production tailored to your needs. Let us bring your vision to life. Contact us today.
We're back.
We can make something work. What we'll do, I didn't bring Mr. Andy, I can never remember. McPherson, Mr. McPherson has a plan that I had sent him earlier that does show the angle parking in here and along this side. So, with, with the angle parking, as I had drafted out before, we had a loss of 11 spaces. Tonight, we've reworked some of these islands, made those less, less prominent. We can put another slide these all down a little bit and probably squeeze one more space in here. And then, I thought we may be able to do, like, a van parking. You see a parking parallel, or, you know, it's a...
Yep.
Parallel parking space apparently here. And a couple more spaces here. If we go one way, it's probably workable, because in my mind, whether these are marked as parking spaces or not, people will park there. And then...
By the boundary, garage?
Yeah, we've got two spaces in front of the garage here. If these are angle, right now, we can't use these spaces up by the garage, because there's no way for this guy to back out. But if we angle park, we do gain another two or three spaces up here. And then, because we're pulled back from the parked place by the four or five feet that Andy had wanted, we, he thought it would be safe to do away with this island here, so we gained two spaces there. So, our loss is a total loss of 11. We've gained eight back, and I've received approval from my employer to say that that's, my client, to say that that would be acceptable. So, what we propose is to, if you guys can move forward with the vote this evening, I will prepare a revised plan, as I've discussed with the city engineer, and that will be part of the thing, the council, the agreement that the council will accept or project the zone change for next week.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys taking the time to do that. Now, I just have one quick question. The island that you're removing, wasn't that the island that the police chief had wanted there?
It is. I didn't have direct communication with him. Do you want to explain what the police chief was looking for? Well, I think he, did we just say we're gonna, I thought we were just gonna put one spot there. Didn't we?
One?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
So, we get one more.
Oh, we're gonna go two more.
Three, four, five, six, seven. I almost think we...
Okay, we had two over there, then. We, with the angle parking, we can pull that parking back.
Right.
Because now, now it's really close, isn't it?
Yeah.
The right-of-way looks like, Ann and I looked at it today, it looks like it's 20 feet, but there's no dimensions, really. It's just an old road, so we're guessing the right-of-way is 20 feet there. So, the vehicles are parking right, right at the edge of the road.
Yeah.
But with the angle parking, you can pull that back and gain some, gain more, you know, five feet back there. In my opinion, I guess you could check with the police chief again, but my opinion, that that takes away that visibility problem there.
Okay.
Do all three of you that have taken the podium agree as to what the change is?
Yes.
Yes. I just want, I just want to confirm that the church is...
Just ask me, ask me to answer that question. You, okay.
Yes, and so, what, we would like, whatever, the city engineer's final proposal, will we fully accept it?
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Not only do you agree on the parking, but you all agree that that takes care of the safety issue?
Yes, greatly improves the safety issue, yeah. I will pay neutral.
Ann, do you know when this will be, when this is planned to go back, or it would end up on city council agenda?
On the, this coming Tuesday.
Okay, is that site plan going to be ready for the city council meeting on Tuesday?
Yes, I have much of it drafted already. I just to make, have to make a few tweaks to add the other spaces that we talked about this evening, so, yes, I can have that ready for next week.
So, we, I guess, could make a motion to recommend to the city council that this be approved on the condition that the city engineer signs off on the revised site plan as agreed upon in the meeting?
Yes, but, but you're still going to discuss the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so, you want a motion for that? Is that what we need?
I would certainly entertain one.
All right, I'll make the motion, that we are looking for city council to go ahead and approve the plan as presented and approved by the city engineer.
Second? All those in favor?
Who seconded them?
Tom, now. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so, the next thing, right, is for the memo citing the comprehensive plan, I know we've gotten some input from Bill Lee and from Jeff. Does anybody have any, any thoughts on that, that they've, want to speak to, or...
I have just, I have some thoughts. We, I received a memo from the city solicitor, and I received a note from A.E. Hodgson regarding citing the comprehensive plan. I think it's important for the record to reflect that although the city solicitor has weighed in on what he believes are findings, and the engineer from A.E. Hodgson has weighed in as to what he believes to be the findings, the findings that we make, even though we may adopt those findings by those folks, that they are our findings, from our independent judgment on what we've heard. So, I, as I mentioned on the first time this matter came before me, there were some areas in the comprehensive plan that I stated, and I will restate those as to why I feel that those findings are consistent for the, for what we are forwarding along to the city council. I do believe that in the comprehensive plan, one of the goals is to improve traffic safety. And although that finding specifically is, is that with the agreement that the parties had made tonight with the ingress and egress, that does in fact address the safety issue. There's also to encourage the retention and expansion of existing businesses, if, no disrespect for the church, but it is, for all purposes of tonight, a business. Also, to increase new residents in the city of Waterville. I'm very proud of the church with the, I don't know what your title is, it pastor?
Yes.
Has done such a marvelous job in inspiring and encouraging and emboldening the parishioners to attend on a regular basis where the parking certainly is necessary. So, that certainly will increase the folks that travel into this city. Also, there may be, although it may be a slight threat, that the historic building, which goes back hundreds of years, could be lost if there was some chance that this plan had failed. So, the retention of this historic building also is in the comprehensive plan. And as I've always said, being a resident of Waterville all of my life, except maybe for seven years, it's a great place to live, and we need to continue making that, so... Those are what I believe are my findings after listening to all of the testimony and evidence over the course of several weeks.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody else? I'd like to add, in the demographics chapter, plan for orderly growth and development throughout the community and to respond to changes in our population. I believe this is in response to the growth that this specific community has seen. And also, in the land use section, encourage orderly growth and development in specific areas of the city.
Can you hang on a minute? I'm trying to keep up with you.
Sorry?
Orderly growth and development?
Yep. Yeah, from the demographics, it's one of the, one of the goals.
Oh, and still in the, that you said in the land.
The land use was, yeah, the encourage orderly growth and development in specific areas of the city. And reading through that chapter, this is part of that, specific areas of the city, so...
Can you tell me what page that was?
Oh, well, I didn't, I didn't...
No, okay.
...cite that in my notes.
Land use was page 14, 15. Land use, oh, land use was page 14, 15, chapter 13.
Thank you.
Scott, I give you an opportunity. Do you want to add anything, since you were the lone dissenter? Give you an opportunity to speak.
I didn't, I didn't think that this was appropriate for negative comments.
Well...
So, I'm gonna...
Okay.
Not say anything.
Okay. Do you need us to vote on that part as well? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve those items cited from the comprehensive plan.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
Good work, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Andy.
Okay, the next item, the city council is requesting a planning board recommendation concerning revisions to the zoning ordinance to comply with PL Chapter 552, also referred to as LD 337. I guess, the first thing I'll say is, Tom, how are you, how are you doing?
Again, here you are.
You okay, Tom?
Well, I want to make sure that I, if a vote could be taken, that I don't want to delay anything by leaving.
Sure.
Well, I'm, could we just ask the director of code enforcement?
Yes.
Would you come?
Come on up.
Sure.
Yeah. How pressing do you think this is, given that it's state law and there are not a lot of mobile homes being put...
We're certainly not the only municipality that doesn't have this addressed yet. I most don't.
Okay.
In the code enforcement community, it's kind of, this wasn't something that was publicized when it happened. It's been law since middle of August, but amongst my other colleagues in other towns, they're really just starting to address it now.
Do you have anybody who's sitting around waiting for us to make this recommendation, because they really want to place a mobile home on a property that they can't today?
No, nothing that, nothing that's pressing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little slow right now. It's a good time to address this in the winter, because a lot of that stuff doesn't happen in the winter. But it's just, nothing, nothing that's probably not gonna, springtime, yes, but right now, no.
Yep. Well, I mean, then, then, I'm, I'm going to, I guess, make the recommendation that since we don't have all of our members here, one of which... since we don't have all of our members here, one of which is on the new, oh, well, not new, she's new to a state committee on housing. And of course, Sam, our chair is not here. I guess I would, I would entertain a motion to postpone this until, I guess, we would say February 25th?
The problem with that is we don't yet have a quorum for February 25th. We're short one member.
If we say we're going to postpone it until our next meeting, does that?
I'll have to advertise it again.
You'll have to advertise it again.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second? So that was Tom Nail made the motion to postpone until our next meeting. So unfortunately, you will need to be advertised again.
And who seconded?
Heath.
Heath, okay.
All those in favor?
Okay. Do you want to take just a minute to discuss this?
Yep, we can still have a discussion.
Well, we're not going to vote, but just a, because this is the second time Dan's come.
That's all right.
So, yeah, essentially, the legislation has passed, and the governor has signed into law a statute that says that manufactured housing must be allowed wherever there is single-family housing allowed. That doesn't prevent people from having private covenants, but as far as the municipality goes and its zoning regulations and things like that, you must allow it. But they've allowed us to also add some design features. So currently, we have essentially the residential A zone, which does not allow mobile homes, like double wides, single wides. Residential B allows double wides, and I think C and D do as well, and, no, they don't. No double wides?
No, no. They don't allow mobile homes at all.
We don't do a lot of development in C and D because it's small zones. But, so in B, double wides currently are allowed, not in residential A. So to make a long, boring, sort of tedious topic short, trying to anyway, we've added some design features for you folks to consider that hopefully would help blend, these homes blend in with the neighborhoods a little more. People buy their homes in certain zones with the understanding that the restrictions that are in those zones come with the property, and that is certain, the neighborhood will have a certain rhythm to it, if you will. So one, a few of those features are a steeper roof pitch, and that the homes be placed on a full foundation or frost wall to take away from that skirting look on the outside. So it look more like a site-built home or a modular home. Those are the big ones, I think. Correct, Ann?
Yeah, I just wanted a clarification on the covenants. I think, I think it would, I'm just guessing, that it would be illegal for someone to establish a covenant now that violates the state. I think it's the prior covenants that protect people from having the mobile homes.
Yeah, that's outside of my realm. We, I don't enforce private covenants, but I don't remember seeing that anywhere in the statute. Did you recall seeing that?
I thought you said private covenants could be adopted as if that were something that could be done in the future, and I'm.
Not by us, but.
No, no, by the property owner. I don't think a property owner could do that if.
I think my, my interpretation is that they could, from what I recall.
We better get an opinion from the solicitor on that. But for sure, any covenant that already exists would, would be honored.
But surprisingly, sometimes they don't exist because the, they follow the zoning of the city.
They didn't expect this to happen.
Didn't expect this to happen.
This has come down from the state. But there are a couple of things in this language that we've put together, draft language, that Dan recommended that especially wanted him to talk about, the office trailers. I believe you said you found someone living in one of those office trailers.
Yeah, we had a provision in our, one of the changes in our zoning ordinance that we're proposing that's kind of unrelated to this, is temporary use of a mobile home at a job site. So mobile homes need to be connected to an approved means of disposal. They are mobile homes, but once one is on the site, good luck if someone decides they want to take 20 years to build their house, good luck, you know, getting it out of there. So what I've proposed is just saying you can have a job site trailer. That's, that's common practice. If you want to have an office to work out of, heated space with power, you can have that, but those job site trailers are not made to live in. Like, a mobile home is made to live in. It's not made to be a job site trailer. It doesn't have bathroom facilities. Your job site trailer doesn't have bathroom facilities. They can get a portable toilet to do that, just common practice, job site practice. So I thought maybe that would clean things up a little bit. And we haven't, I've heard about this happening. I haven't had to deal with it yet, but my predecessor did have a situation where someone was allowed to, you know, basically live in this mobile home at the site while they were building the house, and I, it just took forever and ever and ever. And then, once it's there, that's a whole, that's a whole set of issues.
So do you feel like we're okay with just putting job site trailer? Or does it need to be more specific to say that it can't be hooked to the plumbing or anything like that?
Well, a job site trailer is not made to be lived in, and we'd have to approve of any things. So your job site trailers don't have bathrooms in them, they don't.
Wouldn't be all that tough to put one in, right? I mean, if we didn't have verbiage in there saying that it couldn't happen, could it happen, or?
Um, I mean, not legally, it couldn't happen. I mean, we'd have to approve it. Yeah, I, I'm, more detail is good. I'm never, I'm a fan of detail. So the less that there is open to interpretation, absolutely. I like things to be crystal clear.
Well, that's, that's going to be a challenge, because this is not going to be easy. It is going to be very, very, very difficult. And I say that because I have several developments in town prior to this, where upon Countryway, I built 12, 13 houses up there. Mountain Farm Road, I built maybe six houses up there. And there are some stringent covenants. The size of the building, the exterior cannot be vinyl, cedar shakes. And now for someone, I'm just talking out loud, if I decide to buy another 20 acres someplace, I can, I can't, I mean, I, what can I do? Whoever wants to build, whether it's a mobile home, or I'm going to be able to, I can't say what kind of cedar shingles they should have, kind of siding, side of the building.
Well, my interpretation is that you can. Private covenants are a little different, but the city cannot.
Oh, okay, that's, but I think that's something that, Ann, you disagree with that.
Well, it seems to me if the state is saying that the city has to allow it, then it doesn't make sense to me that a private property owner could just ignore the state.
See, that's where the difficulty, that's what the difficulty is going to be.
The city doesn't approve covenants on deeds.
Yeah, okay, but say marijuana, before it was legal to have marijuana. I couldn't just have my own private covenant that says, oh, anyone can smoke marijuana on my property. You know, I, I don't know. I would ask the city solicitor for an opinion, but that's just one issue. Dan also, we talked, we wanted to deal with anything that had to do with mobile home-type buildings, and so we talked about the fact that now you can live in your basement while you're building the home, and that, you see that out on the countryside quite a bit, but we arbitrarily decided to strike that language, and then you obviously can decide what you think about it and recommend to the council, but. So what, so the language in the ordinance now says residing in the basement before completion of the structure is permitted, subject to conditions and safeguards, as may protect the safety of the occupants and the public, a valid plumbing permit is required. So Dan and I made the decision to strike that, so people are not allowed to live in their basements, because it's hard to tell them they have to stop. What, as Dan was saying before, if you, they go into the work site trailer, it's hard to make them.
Yeah. Egress is a huge thing when people are residing in basements.
So, so part of this is to become compliant with state law, and part of it's just?
To clean up our ordinance, yeah.
A little house cleaning?
Yeah.
Yeah. Dan, I'm assuming you, I was reading the state statute this afternoon, and it said, you know, the cities can do things like the foundation and the pitch roof and the siding, but it can't, I forget the exact words, but, you know, we, we can't make it so that it goes against the, the intent of the law.
Yep. We can't effectively prohibit it by creating so many.
And you feel like we're, we're okay with, with what's being proposed?
I feel like, so it's going to effectively eliminate single wides, mobile homes, from that particular zone, because that steeper roof pitch of a 612 roof won't work with a single wide, a single-section home for transportation purposes, it'd be too tall, it would look ridiculous anyway. And I've never seen one placed on a foundation. It will add cost, if, just to be honest with you, if the intent is to make things more affordable, will it be more affordable than stick-built? Yes. But is this, are these proposed design changes going to add cost? Yes, they will.
Sure.
You've got a basement, you have to change the frame of the home underneath, you have to get a crane and put it on. The roof is more, roof system is more elaborate, it'll add costs, but it will, it will make these homes blend better with the others in the neighborhood.
And that doesn't go against the state's decision?
No, they, they allow you to do that. Those are the things, the two things they allow us to do is require a basement and require the steep pitch roof.
Okay.
But we're saying only in the zones that don't already allow mobile homes. That would be residential A, C, and D would have the requirement for the steep pitch roof in the basement. The places where you can already have mobile homes are B and are R, we wouldn't add that requirement unless it's in an historic district. And we have an historic preservation committee that is looking at recommending to the city council adding an historic district, so that's why I added that language, because I don't think that a mobile home with, without the steep, steep pitch roof would be appreciated by the owners of historic homes. But there is another section that Dan and I found kind of surprising, and that was the recreation section. The state allows us to require a much larger recreation area for mobile home parks that are connected to the public sewer, and all of the ones down West River Road are connected to the sewer. It's about, it's five times the size of the recreation area that we can allow, that we do allow, or require, sorry, require now. But the state is saying if you're on a septic system, you can't, we can't require that big recreation area, and we're assuming it means because with a, with a septic system, you have a leach field, and people can walk on the leach field and play frisbee on the leach field.
So is that something we need to make a change for to require the bigger recreational area?
That's in the, that's in the draft language that I sent you. So the question is, I just wanted, both of us thought you should know.
What will that look like for our existing, what will that look like for our existing parks now?
No change.
It wouldn't change anything that's already existing, but one of the developers is proposing another phase, which hasn't yet been approved. And that's between Village Green and Countryside. It's all now one very large park, but there, there is a piece that's proposed for future development, and that would apply there.
Okay.
But I would assume that, given that it's all one park, that the residents of the whole Punky Meadows all the way up to Village Green would be able to use a larger recreation area.
Okay. All right.
Would someone just explain to me what's, what's the sequence of events that's going to happen now? So this is material that you provided to us, you're proposing these changes, and we have to review it and provide a recommendation to the city council?
Right, correct.
And you're proposing that we wait for the next meeting?
Well, Mr. Nail is ill, and he did us a favor coming, he dragged himself here, and so I was hoping that the discussion would be shorter than a vote, but if you all, it seems as though there's quite a bit here to, to vote on.
I gotta believe this is going to be a potentially controversial topic down the road.
Yes. Yeah.
So we ought to take our time?
Well, it's, we have to do something to be aligned with the state statute, but there will be, it will be controversial, but we're not the only ones that are dealing with it.
My point is, well-taken, with my colleague here, I like to know what I'm going to be voting on.
Yeah, no.
I need, I need a lot more information.
Right.
Right, I did send you the draft.
But I need to digest it, I mean, I need to.
Right, right. I agree, yeah. I read it, and now hearing it from you and, and more explanation from Ann as well, I can go back through and read it again, and, yeah. So, so I think, I think postponing it was the right thing to do.
And I would like to say, Dan, I appreciate you coming for two meetings in a row and sticking it out with us.
That's fine.
I know the last one was a long one.
I really don't mind.
What doesn't help if, and if it's been in the paper, that this company in Maine someplace on the coast is building a lot of these houses because of the state statute, but they're calling them Lego box houses. I mean, and that's not helping, man, I can tell you that.
No, probably not.
But that's, that's what's coming down the.
Yeah, the prefabricated components, yep. Yeah, I mean, it's.
Don't get me wrong, they're needed, believe me. The housing is needed.
I look at it no different than trusses, right? People used to build all the trusses by, by scratch right on the site, and, yeah, they don't do that anymore.
Yeah, the panelized thing has been around for a while, and it has a lot of really good applications. But I'm with you, calling them Legos are not good.
Right, right.
That doesn't sound good.
All right. Yeah, sure.
You mentioned the mobile homes wouldn't be allowed because of the pitch of the roof.
They would be, but you can increase the roof pitch on a mobile home, on a double wide.
He was saying a single wide.
Okay, so, okay, so you said on a double wide?
Yep.
How can the pitch on the double wide be increased over a single wide?
Yep.
And still go down the road the same way, because they come down the road on the same axles, the same frames, they're just in two halves.
Yeah, it's a great question. So when the roof is increased on a double wide home, it's hinged, believe it or not, it's shipped flat, and there's a hinge point on the roof, and you get a boom truck to lift that roof up, and it basically unhinge a knee wall and fasten that knee wall to the home.
Huh, I guess I've never seen a double wide come like that.
Yeah, have you ever seen one going down?
Manufactured homes, yes, but not double wides.
Same as a modular home, yeah. So a modular home and a mobile home, which is a double wide, a Hudco home, they're both manufactured homes.
Right.
And either one can come with that. Typically, so anytime you see one that's, if it's sitting on top of a flatbed trailer, it's a modular home.
Right.
If it's got a permanent chassis underneath it, it's, it's a double wide.
Double wide.
If it comes to the flat roof.
I've always just seen double wides going down the road with the pitch up.
Yep.
I've never, I didn't realize that we're doing it now, and I'm not sure if somebody else might see this later, would ask the same question, so, so I wanted to get it out there.
Great question.
So, so, and I think that, what you just said, a double wide can come in different pitched roofs, and the standard, or, you know.
Is quite flat.
Shallower pitch would not ship flat, it would ship up, but the steeper pitch ships flat and is raised up.
Is there anything that would prevent a single wide from putting a steeper roof on? I mean, I, again, like you say, it would add cost, but is there?
I've ne, I don't see how, they'd have to site-build the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see how that would work, I've never heard of it being done, and I've been, I've been to a lot of plants where they build these things, and I've never seen one being built and never heard of it being.
But if somebody were to fabricate?
If someone were to do it on-site afterwards, well, putting, they'd have to, yeah, you'd have to first, because it's a HUD code home, it has to come with a roof on it.
Okay.
So it would have to come with that standard roof on it, so then putting another, I mean, it just would be cost prohibitive to do something like that. You'd have to remove the roof, and plus, you'd have to get an engineer to evaluate, because they're, they're not built to the regular building code, it's a HUD code thing, and they're all inspected at the factory. So we'd have to, we could require an engineer to evaluate whether the wall system can handle that additional load coming down for the new roof construction. It'd be a lot, wouldn't be worth it.
So just to, we already said this, but it's a lot of information, so I just want to repeat that the proposal that Dan and I are sending to you is for the steep pitched roof in the residential A zone, the C zone, and the D zone. So RB and RR would not have that requirement, and I would say most of the vacant land is in the RB and the RR zones, there's not a lot of vacant land in, especially C and D, but also RA. So you wouldn't be imposing this on a lot of properties.
And we're not proposing the foundation and pitch roofs in residential B because?
Because they already are allowed to have mobile homes, and we don't want to be flying in the face of the state law, however they put that, I can't remember. We want to comply or support the state law.
All right.
So, there's no meeting on the 11th, and there probably won't be one on the 25th, because we'll have to have an answer from Cassie. We don't know whether she's, or maybe she doesn't know whether she's available or not on the 25th, and we have a 14-day notification requirement, so I would be able to tell you at least 14 days before the 25th whether or not there would be a meeting on that date.
Ann, I'm away.
Right, I.
February 19th to March 2nd or 3rd.
So I, I have that you're not available, but I didn't know about the rest of it, March, all right. March, I'll talk to you later.
February 19th to March 3rd.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this? No? All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.